Any additions and additions to the agenda?
I was gonna think I think that's a session. Unless the board wants it.
Fine, okay. Anything else?
All right, enough for me.
Anyone? Citizens comments? Name, obviously.
My name is obviously?
Yeah, tonight it is.
Roger Logan, Woodstock Village. I have a suggestion to make to the board, and I spoke to Eric about it last week, and he was at least provisionally supportive of it. I was struck in Eric's presentation about kind of the state of the state of Woodstock. That there are potentially some unrealistic expectations around service requests to the town. Things like filling potholes and things of that nature. And that seems to me a place where some getting some citizen involvement and obviously with the select board's approval would be helpful. So what I'm suggesting is is to create a system for handling constituent service so that they can be managed more systematically, start to build up a database of how long particular efforts take, what kind of efforts are coming in, and to much more systematically track the resolution and outcome of of things of that nature. And so hopefully our staff can spend more time focusing on planning for the future and doing long-term projects as opposed to kind of putting out fires with with apologies to the people who actually do put out fires. So it's it's I think it's probably fair to say that there's never been a system in place for really tracking requests or even managing how requests come in. I might call Eric, I might call Ray, I might call Laura, I might call Susan, I might call Greg, which is obviously extremely inefficient and also allows things to get lost in the shuffle. So what I'd like to suggest is put together a small working committee. Hopefully one that is small enough or unofficial enough that it doesn't have to fall under the public meetings law. But that's obviously not something I understand well enough to say one way or the other. To start working on putting together a program to implement a systematic approach to managing constituent requests. I would start by researching automated systems to manage this. And and after speaking to Eric about it, he said one thing that might be helpful is just for someone like me or other folks who are interested in taking this on. Do the actual work of of looking at different systems. There's probably hundreds out there. It's essentially a helpdesk desk system that you would use for IT or anything else. I'm sure you used a work order system of some kind when you were grounds, when you were managing the physical plant. That should include a customer self-service function so that it's online, so that most requests could come in through a web form and then as as you set that up that the that the requests are categorized. And then ideally as much as possible, those are self-assigned to the correct to the correct person. If it's if it's something to do with Public Works, it goes to the Public Works person. I imagine that's the majority of the requests that come in of that nature. But that kind of remains to be seen. Again, I don't think there's a lot of data behind but out there at the moment about what comes in and how it gets resolved because it's all on an ad hoc basis. Then that should have some management reporting built into that. So if you have a a a customer service contract essentially that all requests get answered within twenty one business day, that you can see that flagged on a management screen that that has not been asked addressed, which is not to say solved, obviously, because some things might take days or weeks to solve. And that it be multi-channel, that it be something you could manage from your phone, it'd be something that you could do online. Ideally, that given the given our population here, that that could also include a call center function of some kind. But again, something that could be automated that was a menu driven so that those things could go right into the pipeline and get routed correctly. So then based on that, then select an automation system. And then create and implement a public communication strategy to say this is happening. These are the, this is the way that this is going to work. And then going forward, here's what's gonna happen. I had originally considered setting up a kind of service standards for like if a pothole gets filled, you decide how often, how many days does it really take under normal circumstances to fill potholes? I actually talked to John Spector about this thing. He had a good idea that we don't have the data to make those kinds of determins determinations yet, but if we get a system like that, this in place, the data that we can generate from that plus talking to the staff who actually manage, who actually do the on-the-ground work would then allow us to kind of start setting up and communicating to the public what the standards for for response time are for any given request. So if there's agreement that this is a worthwhile effort, I'd be happy to take it on in terms of chairing whatever two or three citizens would be interested in this. I don't know if a board member being up being on a group like that turns it into a a public meeting thing or not, but so what, you know, when you consider this, just let me know and I'll be happy to start, you know, the first thing I would do is is kind of agree with Eric on a set of requirements for an automated system and then just go out and start looking for them. And like I say, there's probably, there's probably hundreds of systems out there. Hopefully some really cheap ones because we're not, you know, we're not managing New York City here, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Roger.
Yeah. Roger, as always, I really appreciate your enthusiasm and your engagement. I, as someone who used Boston 311 excessively when I lived there, I'm always appreciative of self-service portals. I think the thing to balance, and I'm sure you're aware of it, is that this doesn't become, you know, if if we look into things that the tool doesn't become the thing people, another thing people are frustrated with in their quest for service. And I think I think that, yeah, I think that's that's probably just like the first concern I have. I think that it'd be great to have a system that people can see and it's accessible. I would also say like, given what I know about people who live here, there's also something that's very gratifying about being able to pick up the phone, talk to the person as time-consuming as it takes. I would love to automate as much as we can, obviously, efficiency sake. But I think that there's there's something to be said about people being able to call Eric's office and get Eric as, again, as inefficient as that is. But I do think that there's a large discrepancy between like expectation and what we are reasonably able to offer and figuring out how to bridge that gap is really important for satisfaction within our community. So I really appreciate you coming with the suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, having lived in New York and extensively used the 311 system there, it was meant to avoid doing anything by the city.
Yeah.
There's no question about it, my mind. It was just a way of deep-sixing any kind of requests. I think it's doable, absolutely. It is nice to be able to call Eric or Mark, you know, but I know I wasted Mark's time two or three times, and it was a very inefficient way of getting of getting something done. And Eric and and whomever is in charge of any department should be concentrating on long-term stuff and and structural stuff as opposed to dealing with the nitty-gritty. It's nice, but yes, obviously, the customer, the communications part of this is key. If if it doesn't work, then the entire effort is wasted and it's going to take some structural organization within the way the town works as well. You know, there's there's a decision tree. Where does this go? And those decisions all have to be made. You can't, you can't automate a non-existent system.
Right.
So that's that's all that's all part of it as well. But I think it's worth doing if we can get our town staff people working on things they should be working on as opposed to answering me on the telephone again.
Yeah, and I think there is something to say.
And you all too. I mean, that's.
And I think there's something about telling people about the work that gets done that they don't see too, you know?
Yeah.
We paved X amount, X miles of sidewalk. We did fill X many potholes. Like having that data could be really valuable for that satisfaction.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and you have to tell people, like you said, reasonable expectations. If like our staff is a finite staff, and I mean, even our trucks are probably finite. You know, you can't fill two potholes at once if there's only one truck that can fill bottles. I mean, I don't really know how that works. I'm sure you do, but. So, yeah, that's that it it rises or falls just like anything else we do on how well the communication works.
I mean, and maybe there's something, but not to bring David back into this conversation, but certainly we do know for the police and fire department, like how those categories calls, the breakdown of the categories calls throughout the year, what calls are sorted to which category, like what's a.
Yeah, and I assume that's because there's some automation in that system. I don't know that, but I assume there is.
Yeah.
The 911 system.
Great, thanks. So I just say two quick things on this. Roger did come to me last week and I appreciate him coming forward with this idea. It's what we want to see with our residents coming with solutions as much as they can. So I want to appreciate him coming in also volunteer to take this potential task on. As always, staff time is limited, so something Roger and I talked about was how to do this and limit the upfront staff time. Something we probably still work on to figure out how best to do that. Another thing, I early on looked at using a C clicks fix, which we use in Salem, Massachusetts, which is a system where residents can kind of take a photo of something and send it directly to the town. And then we kind of go through prioritize it, and then you have the data afterwards that over the course of a year, you had eighteen potholes, you had sort of, we weren't fully there in the staff capability at that time, i.e. some of our staff and people do not have cell phones. And so we have to provide them with cell phones so they have the ability. So it was a little back and forth, you know, got to, then the flood happened and, you know, it kind of went away. But I'll say I think this is a great, and this may not be Roger's idea, but having this information, if we actually could be successful in this and then show to the residents saying like, your tax dollars currently fund this service time. If you say you want more, that might mean hiring two more DPW staff. So are you okay with your tax going up three percent more? So a pothole goes in five days or three days. So it could be a good visual exercise to kind of visualize how much things cost and what that means. I know we talked to people in the village and they talk about the police budgets. And you say, okay, step one is not have 24-hour coverage. And they say, well, we need 24-hour coverage, and that's why we have the staffing we have. So it's a good visualization for people to kind of see taxes for a service, so.
I know he was just here, but does Hanover use something, a tracking system?
I can I can figure out, yeah.
Okay, yeah, maybe that could be, but yeah, I I would be interested to know.
I'd be sure.
Yeah, using something, yeah.
I think there's other issues that people will have to call about too. Someone recently called me about, you know, who do they call to get a permit to have a food truck? And I actually didn't know which department or, so I just gave them the town hall number.
Yeah.
You know, those kind of calls, it would be great if there was a way they got routed for everything.
Yeah. Okay.
Any other citizens comment?
Hey. Okay. So you see, there's no financial update right now. That's because two reasons. One, we're three weeks into the new fiscal year, so we haven't had a payroll completed yet. We only have about one warrant done for FY25. FY24 is done, closed. We're just doing some adjustments in the backend to move money around kind of wise to do the right adjustments for we close the fiscal year. So once we've done that, I will have a update for the board and what the surplus is. We're hoping it'll be pretty good. We will carry the FEMA expenses over into the next fiscal year, but I believe all but one project has been obligated now by FEMA, which means we should get the full amount in probably the next coming months. It'll be something good to look forward to. Kind of on Roger's conversation a bit more. Our DPW is currently short-staffed. Luckily, we haven't had any floods. We haven't had any major issues. We're working about two people down, so we all look for new employees, but also service time has increased overall, be just because of not having full staff there. So again, I ask the public's patience when it comes to concerns of issues involving a public works departments. What else I want to talk about? The Board Guard and email are rotated for me. I'm going on vacation, starting midday this Thursday through the following Sunday. Chief Green will be the interim town manager from then until the following Thursday when he's on vacation, at which point I'll take back over their responsibilities the last days of my vacation, in case anything happens. I'll just be in Massachusetts on an island, but I'll be reachable besides the ferry ride across. I want to welcome Kitty Mayor's core to our town hall. This is our third weekend. For any of you who've been on the website, you've seen the work she's done and updating the website. She's been doing the minutes for select board trustees, joint boards and signing all the minutes for the plans zoning committees as well. So she's been doing a good job so far and just want to welcome aboard. I want to make an announcement that Stephanie Applefellow will be moving from plan zoning over to to be my chief of staff going forward. It's effective yesterday. She's going to stay in plan zoning for a little while to kind of help them with the transition, especially with short-term rental stuff happening. But once she's over on my office full-time, she's going to be taking on some of these projects like Roger mentioned, bigger projects, being on the community, really trying to fit the pieces all together, make sure we're all working as efficiently as possible. Being someone who can take on some of my tasks day-to-day, work on those, but really just find ways to make sure we're communicating better internally and externally. She's excited for the change on mine, so I think it'll be something positive for the community as a whole. So looking forward to that happening. And then finally, about two hours ago, I got positive news from the State Department. We've been approved to host a fellowship from a planning zone expert from Indonesia is going to be coming over and working with us from about mid-September through mid-October to the ICMA, which is the International City Management Association, which I'm a group of. So every year they allow a few candidates to kind of apply to come to different countries and kind of work in their municipality for a month or so. This person's coming over, an expert in planning and sustainability and economic development. So that got approved this afternoon pending finding housing in Woodstock, which is a common for any worker who wants to be here. Luckily, ICMA is working on that front, not us, so as soon as they have housing set up, we'll meet that official. And that could be a good experience for them and Woodstock as a whole. I'm excited for that as well. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I would say just a reminder about the informational meeting next week.
Oh, yes. So Thursday, the 25th is the informational session for the short-term rental ordinance. It'll be a public meeting held here by the select board to go over what's in the new ordinance, what's in the old ordinance, what has been changed. And then to answer any questions the public has, leading up to a street ballot vote on July 30th from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And a reminder, if you're a village resident, you can vote in the town election and the village election as well, so you can vote twice. So that'll be great. And then the negotiations with the, what's like, I would accompany it. So ongoing, we're hoping to have an announcement very soon about the status of that as well.
Hey, first thing on the agenda is ambulance write-offs.
So this is a yearly process for bills that haven't been paid. Before we go into it, I just want to make a point that an FY25 budget, the select board decided to increase the amount budgeted for this amount. In the past, we've always underfunded this. For this fiscal year, we have $90,000 budgeted. We're looking at a write-off of $73,000. So for the first time, I think in a long time, the board has actually over-budgeted, which is a good thing, instead of budgeting to kind of alleviate some more burden on the residents. So one good side on this that we did our job correctly and made sure we had enough money in this account. I'll turn it over to the board for a bunch of questions.
Yes, Cory has a note here about taking a more active role in collections. I, David, I wonder if you have any thoughts about that? Well, no, not that she, that that we, sorry, that we as a town take a more active role in in bill collections for ambulances for ambulance bills.
It is a lot of money.
Yes, so ambulance collection, let me just start back. The reason the bill's gone up in 2017, I believe, we increased our rates substantially, and that ended up with an increase on write-offs. So there's a direct correlation between an increase of rates and an increase of write-offs. That being said, we make phone calls, we send letters that up to three times each. I don't know what more we could do to gather more more of those funds back. If you have ideas, I'm willing to listen, but it takes man-hours that we really don't have.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if maybe in the first letter you sent a payment plan or the second letter you sent a payment plan.
We do. We offer them. We offered all kinds of ways to work with them. We'll do 10-year payments, whatever it takes. Some people take us up on that, some people we never hear from.
I think Laura and I were talking a few months ago about trying to find ways to send different types of letters for, I think, doing your taxes. So we also talked about if we send a different form letter from my office, something else would that have more sway or something? We try those options as well. But I think what the chief's saying is correct is it also comes down to staffing time and concerns and, you know, I mean, $73,000 is not a lot, you know, so, you know, option is that we could hire a part-time person or pay someone part-time to dedicate their time to this and maybe we waste $30,000 on someone to make sure we're not writing off $70,000 or something. And so those options as well, you know, but.
And I think it's standard that these are soft bills, but I'm wondering since you're part of what other departments do so that they're not everybody's.
The reason is that they don't want to go after their tax payments with collections. It would be an extreme anomaly.
Okay. Thanks.
So is there any motion to move the ambulance write-off of 73,396.5 cents?
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
Oh, Wendy has her hand up.
I know you're kind of middle of a motion though, you may want to, okay. Yeah, I think you already made the motion for her hand went up, so.
Oh, all right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Wendy, do you want to make a comment?
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Eric. It's this this dialogue just prompted a question. I've recently joined the the members of Medicare and I'm wondering if the people that don't pay their bills are waiting for insurance payments and the confusion of when it takes a long time for those to come through, and I don't know how that plays in to ambulance fees, but it's just a thought about why things fall through the cracks. The billing process for insurance is very cumbersome. It's just an observation and sort of a question, but it's just if that helps the quest, it's just, I wanted to throw that in the pot.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, Quinn Road upgrade.
Don't want to talk about Quinn Road.
That's you.
The true, oh. So I think we wanted a few of you to go out, Chris Farr to go out. Chris Farr was okay with everything. I think Chief Green, you have any concerns?
No, I was told the building would be scrum full.
So basically, we just went over where the culverts were going to go, and they were going to be town specs, which I think was 18-inch and staying in the same runoff is where the water runs off now. And the only other thing was the snowmobile trail on that shared portion of it.
Which you and I, we walked, I I reviewed the far section with the owner.
Yeah.
He liked your idea, stay in the field and go out in that barway.
Okay.
And then I flagged the rest, which is because I took your advice and it's just brush. Got one pine like this and a couple little trees for the rest of the vast trail, but so it's along and it skirts up and you, just what you pointed. And it comes back down, but we definitely will provide.
He was okay with all that.
He was okay with all that, absolutely. He wanted a less, he didn't want, he agreed with you. I spend a lot of money on taking down those big white pines along right 10 feet away from that wall.
And then the only other thing, I think it's 12 foot is the width, raise the grade up.
This is for the vast trail?
No, I'm talking on the town.
Back to the town road.
Vast trail is going to be off that section
Exactly.
of class four, it's just going to cross it. As far as the town goes, the road goes up
to where it used to be. Yeah.
Right, and it's only going to end up being 12 feet wide approximately. Is that right? I've heard that figure.
Roads surplus and digits.
Right.
Exactly, yeah, and pull-offs.
Yep.
And you, there was a concern that the new logging landing put some water onto the town and that's that's something that everyone's aware of and knows how to fix it.
Yep. So Chris was okay with all those changes? If they do that, like they, I think there was a plan on that, was there not? Excuse me, did Brad have a plan?
Oh, for sure, the plan section, putting that, right? Yes, yeah. But I, would you would you like me to provide you the full side?
I mean, just so we, you can eyeball it and see that it's what you guys talked about.
Yeah.
That's the existing, the end of the class three road. And this is their proposed updating class four road.
To here, to here, exactly. And then
All that's there.
And then and then providing this fast. And here, this is what this does, does that and comes out, which is, you know, there's no trees, it's right on grade, cutting, it's just better, which Greg pointed out. And Greg, I think this just, this does, this between my two fingers, the vast trail, it's slightly very variance in that.
I don't think that to 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 basically, you take your advice, you know, better better track.
And and your turnout's here for the fire engine and fire trucks as well? Okay. Okay.
So it will be tight up there, but a lot of other roads are the same thing. They're up, they're upgrading it, so.
I think it's a plus for us, actually. Class four roads.
Chris said no problem.
Chris didn't have any problems going up. What we discussed, we just wanted to move the, Chris was Public Works.
Gotcha, thank you.
With Brad.
Yep.
And myself. And it was just brought up to get the snowmobiles off from that road, be a safety thing, and the owners offered to do that. And it was just brought up to get the snowmobiles off from that road via safety thing. And the owners offered to do that. I don't have a problem with it.
We're looking for a motion to upgrade, to approve the upgrade of
Correct.
Quinn or Long, Quinn Road. Okay. I would move that we approve the upgrade of Quinn Road as depicted on the Brad Ruderman survey.
For a second?
For a second.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Would you like full copies of all this stuff or?
I think the town should have.
Yeah, I'll take a copy.
This is the plan. And these two are the text.
Thank you.
Next is Fallen Road foliage. What's your name?
Michael Doten, three, four, eight, eight, Cloudland Road. I'm actually a Pumfret residence, but representing the whole neighborhood of Pumfret and Woodstock, Cloudland Road and Barber Hill. Obviously, what happens on Barber Hill doesn't affect Woodstock, but the Woodstock end of Cloudland Road is what we are proposing for closure identical to last year. This is the fall foliage closure due to the social media influencers and TikTokers and everybody that comes up and floods the area around Sleepy Hollow Farm, especially during Indigenous Peoples' holiday weekend, but also the weeks surrounding it.
And what are the dates this year?
The dates this year, the I proposed slightly extended dates because they pushed the holiday, either pushed the holiday backward, it just falls very late this year. But the conference select board balked at that a little bit. They thought four weeks was excessive. So they're talking the twenty fifth of September through the sixteenth of October. Let me double check that. Make sure the twenty fifth is the right date.
I know Ben, the department wrote for this last night. Probably whatever tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night. Yeah, September twenty fifth through October sixteenth.
And all the residents are on Fallen Road in favor of this?
Yes, yep. Basically, we did a survey at the end of the, at the end of the closure overwhelmingly positive overwhelmingly wanting to do it again this year. We're hoping that two years is enough. I have thoughts about how we might scale it back next year if we do it again or whatever, but it was very effective last year. And I think we've got to do it at least a couple of years to somehow deal with this.
Can I ask a few questions to Ben? Ben, are you there?
Yes. Hi, good evening.
Could you introduce yourself and your role?
Yes, my name is Benjamin Brickner. I'm chair of the Pumfret Select Board and a Pumfret resident.
Are you guys doing the same thing with a detail from the sheriff this year?
Yes, although last year we had eight hours per week on average under our contract. The contract this year has been expanded somewhat, but we are looking to only assign about sixty percent of our hours this year, which will allow some patrol time elsewhere in town. But same concept, just a slightly lower commitment on the contracted patrol hours this year.
And all you'd require from Woodstock is the barriers down at the bottom of the road?
That's right. The barriers at the bottom of the road at River Road and also just the opportunity to coordinate with you and your road crew teams when the closure is in effect.
I could clarify one thing. The residents will be paying for the police coverage as we did last year. Other than what the the town is covering, as Ben mentioned, the town is covering a bit of it. But we'll be covering the predominance of the of the coverage for both the sheriff and for a private patrol on the Barber Hill side.
Chief Green, do you have a second? Do you mind coming up? I have a quick question. Being a stepson today. You're in beach in a week. It feels good. Are you sure of any issues with any of your crew or the police to try and get up Cloudland Road last year during the blockage?
No, we had no calls over there. We make a pretty staunch memo on how to deal with it. And I don't see any problems.
Thank you.
And to be clear, it's not actually physically blocked off for traffic, especially emergency vehicle traffic coming through. We made sure that was some discussion about that early on last year before we actually did the closure.
Yep.
But we never, nobody ever approved an actual physical barrier closing the road and that didn't happen. And that's not going to happen this year.
Okay.
Eric, if I if I may add very quickly, Mike's correct about the dates. The Pumfret Select Board is proposing Wednesday, September twenty five through Wednesday, October sixteen. That shifted back slightly from last year to pick up the Indigenous Peoples' Day weekend, which rolled back a week while still keeping the closure to about three weeks. We did feel the board felt that four weeks was just longer than we were comfortable closing a public road. And our next meeting is tomorrow evening where we're hoping to sign off on all the details and are hoping for your board's endorsement or approval of a closure during the same period.
Questions?
My comment was just about communications. I think, you know, making sure that we're letting residents know obviously ahead of time. I think this was a story that was picked up quite a bit and got a lot of traction last year for better or for worse. And so making sure we're giving folks a lot of time ahead to clarify what's actually happening and what the closure actually means would be helpful. And if we need to coordinate with Pumfret on that, that's, we can do that.
And and to be clear, the residents, our our group of residents has taken on the the onus to make sure that that happens with communication, with making sure that access is clear and what's going to happen for all residents of the area.
I I expect we'll take the same communication steps this year as last year, which included sending hard copies of the closure plan to everyone on the closure area, Claln Road, Barber Hill Road. We also placed an ad in the paper about a week and a half prior to the closure and there were listserv messages both in Pumfret and Woodstock, I think, weekly immediately before and during the closure. Obviously, the international news attention helped our cause of getting the word out, but we think the messaging that we took organically last year should do the trick, but are open to suggestions for any other steps you think Pumfret should take.
I don't know anything at this moment. I think last year we paid to have the sign up to kind of what buses know before they got passed Billings Farm. Yeah. So we can have Chris Barr look at the cost of that and bring it from the board in August.
Thank you. That's great. Mike's point about it being well received last year, that was my experience as well. Eric, I know you were, Susan, you were at the debrief session last year and feedback was uniformly positive. And the ripple effect on tourism seemed to be minimal, if even heading in the opposite direction according to the Chamber of Commerce. So we're comfortable executing this again. We think it'll have the desired effect of enhancing public safety and improving quality of life for residents in the closure area.
Thank you. Hey, is there a motion to approve closing of in road?
Should we be doing that before it's Pumfret though?
So, I mean, you can do either one. You can close your road if I vote right now if you want, or you could close it with the caveat that Pumfret does it tomorrow. You also close it if Pumfret, we could have a meeting in August and overturn the vote and not close it. So either way, I think it's fine.
You asked a question.
Well, I guess I would move that we close the road consistent with conference action if they're next week.
Is there a second?
A little second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye.
Okay. Good luck. Much. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, everyone.
Now, I, yep. Chief Green's going four for four on the agenda.
One up.
So before David gets here, I just want to kind of preface this and help us say the same thing, but we're looking now at about a four year period between ordering a fire truck and then when delivered. So, and we pay on delivery as well, but, you know, just so we have an idea, this is not something that come in tomorrow. It's going to be a long period. So this takes some kind of long term thinking of how we want to do this, but. I don't know if you.
Keep going.
Has that always been the case the long lead times or?
Oh, no. So COVID changed the world drastically. Before, the average delivery time of a truck was around, give or take a hundred and eighty to two hundred and eighty days. Our truck that we just received in twenty one, we ordered in nineteen, we paid around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that. We also specked out a ladder truck at the same time, which was nine hundred thousand. And you can see how much they are, have gone up in five years. So, but it's time to replace some of our trucks. Woodstock has a twenty year replacement plan on fire trucks. We've never met that. But now we're we're getting in the territory where the trucks are, you know, reaching twenty five years in age. They need to be sent down the road. As Greg said, we do take really good care of them. We know they're all worth a lot of money. But that being said, this week I've spent four thousand dollars on one truck in one week. And that's going to continue. It's, there's just no way around it. But we have some choices here. And if you have a few minutes, I'll lay out the choices for you. Each engine two is our oldest truck. It's up to station two. Miles really don't matter on these trucks because they're all relatively low mileage. Hours is high though, and being living in the rust belt, I mean, salt and and working as a fire truck, water, things start rustling and we're having continued continuous problems with that. That being said, our engine two, like I said, is up for replacement. And we have two choices really for this truck in my mind, that we replace engine two, but we also have an insurance problem and an OSHA problem. So ISO requires us, because of the number of commercial buildings we have at specific heights, to have a ladder truck. And when we lost our last ladder truck, it wasn't wholly the problem, but we lost one ISO point. And what that means is roughly six hundred dollars every six months increase in insurance prices to commercial buildings. And I get squeezed regularly by these guys saying, when are you going to redo your ISO points? And I keep saying, I'm not ready. I don't have the equipment. I don't have the stuff in place. We're working towards it, but it may be a while. The other thing is residential insurance is looks at a couple of things, distance to hydrant, distance to a fire station and the amount of water we carry on our trucks to a structured fire. So engine two holds a thousand gallons. If we were just to get rid of that and buy a ladder truck, we lose five hundred gallons of water and that will significantly hurt residential insurance. If we keep engine two and don't get the ladder, we're in the same place with commercial insurance. I know this is no easy choice. You can see down below where I specked out what a used ladder would cost. Six hundred thousand, and then we'd probably have to refurbish it. So you're looking at another six hundred thousand or somewhere between three and six. Factories no longer do refer refurbs because they're so far behind in truck rebuilds. The big one at the bottom of that paragraph is OSHA is looking at a standard to come into effect the end of this year. This is you can only have a truck that's fifteen years old, refurbish it, you get to keep it for ten more years, then it's gone. And more than likely, that is going to happen. We're in public comment now. Fire departments are squeaking a lot, but OSHA does what OSHA does.
And a quick question on that?
Yes.
Engine two is nineteen ninety nine, so it's twenty five years right now. If this OSHA thing passed
will be in.
Tomorrow, that that truck cannot be used anymore.
Oh, we gotta use it, but we're going to cross our fingers nothing happens. Yes, our insurance company offers our OSHA audits, our OSHA programs, so there is no way to sneak around this. Southwood Stock's going to have the same problem.
I ask you how the South.
Yeah, it doesn't matter if you're volunteer, municipal, the only ones that get out of this are the feds. So.
How do the, I don't know the age of the Southwood Stock trucks, but I'm wondering if they fit into your plan of of need.
I don't know, but we count that water supply as our water supply and we're allowed to. So we hope they can keep rolling. Having a ladder truck to the fleet, as I put, ISO requirement right now as we sit, safety to our members. Should we have to bail out of a building, safety to the public? Should we have to rescue them? And then it's multi use fires, rescue, rope rescue, et cetera. So you can see, I hate to be the bearer of bad news here, but my suggestion is we buy a new engine and a new quint and go back to the fleet that we used to have.
We have room for these?
Sure do. Yeah, once we build it, station three.
So. That's in the back, actually.
I just ignored that. Engine two, we, it's worth keeping?
Yeah.
No, I mean, it's right now, today, I put an estimate of twenty five thousand. When we traded in engine one in twenty twenty one, the dealer offered us seventy five hundred.
Okay, these numbers in four years aren't going to be.
Yeah. So if we were to keep it, I know what you're saying, but then we're possibly not going to be able to meet OSHA requirement. We'll have to do a refurb on it, spend anywhere from three to six hundred thousand.
But would that be worth it for, say, Southwood Stock?
So Greg, do you mean buying these new engines and keeping engine two as well? Okay.
Yeah.
If it's only worth a thousand.
I don't even think it'll be worth that, Greg.
Should we refurbish it and use it at another?
It depends what the OSHA rule does. Because if the OSHA rule meets what they want, it has to go down the road. No questions.
What would they not, what rules would it not be?
A truck can be fifteen years old. You get rid of it or you do one refurb and you get ten more years out of it. Period. But the, so we're at year twenty four right now.
Because if anyone, I mean, the problem is if anybody got hurt on it.
Yeah.
And it doesn't meet OSHA, we'd be in trouble.
Yeah. So I know it's a lot to think about. The two quotes on there, a new engine of one point one nine four is without trade in, without our loyalty stuff. I suspect we'd be in the nine hundred eight fifty range. And the quint ladder, I'm not really sure, but I would suspect that would be in the one five, one point five five. So these are estimates, but.
Two questions for you. One, if you've had to choose one option, one truck, you choose a ladder truck. And then if we made this order today, the price gets locked in the day of the order.
As far as I know, unless COVID or some other monkey pox comes, who knows? But we should be locked in.
Have we? I could probably pull up financials, but I have no clue what they are. Been putting aside for any of these? Do we have any money in the bank?
Oh, you guys cut my capital budget last year. Um, I have, I have roughly eighty five thousand dollars saved up for a fire truck.
I think you got to beat these guys up on the price a little bit.
Greg, you take a ride with me, we'll get some Coors Light. We'll go hit them hard.
Well, that's your first mistake.
Jack Daniels?
Wow, these prices are crazy.
Yeah, but you can see in in four and a half, five years, they doubled.
Yeah.
So I know we don't know, have the funding right now. I know everything's up in the air. But if we're going to do this, it'll take me six to seven months even to get ready to order if you say yes today.
So we have, do we have estimates or just?
Now, these are back of the napkin from the people that I get the trucks from now. But we've got to spec the truck out how we want it. So the ladder truck, we're actually pretty close because we did that recently in two thousand eighteen nineteen. And we'll probably copy engine one's recent purchase to some degree. But it's still going to take six months for the factory to get the quotes, to build, you know, to do all their CAD drawings. Uh but it's still gonna take six months for the factory to get the quotes, to build, you know, to do all their CAD drawings. So. I'd be, I think we'd be lucky to be able to sign a contract by the first of the year. We'd be darn lucky.
I'm curious as to what OSHA's requirements are gonna change, what what exactly they are.
Yep, so I can, I have a a four hour long presentation. So basically what they're gonna do. Is uh NFPA now is the standard across the board and towns can choose to follow that or not follow that. OSHA hasn't touched the fire departments in forty five years, pretty much stayed away. They said, all right, we like NFPA, you now have to follow NFPA, no questions asked. So it it's gonna be more than just fire trucks. It's gonna be new gear, radios. There is, I mean, this is. The bottom of the tip of the iceberg of their trucks or the big equipment, and then it's gonna be trickled down all the way down.
NFPA is what?
National Fire Protection Association, yeah. So there's a, like I said, there's a lot of squeaking. I met with Bernie Sanders people last week and had a conference call with them. And um now they're doing what they can. They got attached to one of his bills. He's really miffed about that. Um, but like he said, OSHA's gonna do what OSHA does. They'll play, they'll play nice, let you weigh in on public comic, but more than likely, they're just gonna shove this through. Like they do every other OSHA standard. So I think it'll put a lot of towns in jeopardy, smaller towns. Uh Southwood Stock, Bridgewater, the departments that can't even come close to afford.
By thinking, how can they, cause they, if they can't afford, these departments can't afford it, what are they gonna do? Close them?
Well, no, there's a thing called regionalization and I'm ready to pounce. They've been working for it on years uh with other departments. They start to close, we'll be there to to help assist towns maintain fire protection.
So just financially quickly, um. One, in the past, we put away twenty thousand dollars of fire trucks. Uh David uh asked for fifty thousand this year. We gave thirty five thousand. For that thirty five thousand, they have about eighty five thousand dollars in capital reserve. Um as of right now, um if you put fifty thousand away for the next four years, you get to about almost just under three hundred thousand dollars. Uh you'll be looking at about a three million dollar for two purchases. So looking about, if you do a twenty year bond, a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Um before interest on that, so you probably need to give up to a hundred thousand. A year, so um we're behind the ball frankly for for reserves. Um, so when it comes to finances, we'll have to be creative and it's gonna take a chunk out of our operating budget going forward. Um, one way or the other.
The surplus, some of the surplus, is that?
Uh potentially, we want to, yeah.
And quite honestly, the best thing we can hope for is regionalization. If we can be a pivot point in that for surrounding towns.
And nothing.
Front costs, but we'll be able to put that money in the back end.
And having, I assume, a ladder truck, the new ladder truck would be a better bet at some point for regulation if you have. So uh I think as Chief Green said, I I don't know if we have to decide tonight, but we can try to run some numbers internally. If the board wants to give some guidance on what they wanna see, I can have our Robert look at some numbers, uh so Chief Green can kind of go over some options. Um, what's it gonna look like?
Well, I think he knows better than what we, that's what he needs, so.
It's firefighting, yes, but I hated to bring this to you because I like to be fiscally responsible as I can. Uh we're in kind of a pickle over this. I know it's not easy, some tough calls and. We do what we have to do, Greg.
My suggestion was would be to look at both vehicles. Use a motion?
I mean, you need a motion if you wanna actually vote on purchasing them on floor to to look at them. You don't need a motion. You can tell me do a thousand things and we'll do it on the back end.
There. Is there a deal for, is there a discount for buying both of them?
Oh, trust me, we'll get a discount.
Okay.
I'll even make sure you get a a fire truck hat out of the deal.
Chief, is there a way that you could um? Go back to them and say the board's interested in purchasing potentially two vehicles, which you want, and see what the actual quote would be, or is that not?
Not until we build it.
Okay.
So we have to spec them out and then the manufacturer will say, this is what you want and we'll say yes, and they'll say this is what it costs.
X uh based on, and again, it's very new to the fire truck building process, but uh are the specs stuff that like. We say based on like our needs as a community, we need, and are there ranges of specs, like when you order like. The baseline of a car versus like the really high end finishes and is there movement there between like what's a nice to have and what's a.
Yes, absolutely. So uh while I would always love the Cadillac version, Cadillac, never get that, but we never buy the Pinto version. We're somewhere in between.
Okay.
Uh what will happen is last time when we were ready, talking about the other ladder truck, I called around and Burlington was like, hey, we're buying two. Said I want in, so we were able to get it a little cheaper. I'll do some of that this time. I mean, if I have to call Boston Fire. We'll we'll get in on somebody's purchase.
I'll drive down with you.
Yeah, to save money.
Okay.
Uh so we'll we'll do all we can to save money and we may not get the exact truck we want and you may not get the exact price. You want, but we'll find something in the middle.
I have a question.
Right, right to me.
That's the hot seat.
So I mean, this is really a question for for Chief Green. Um obviously, we're talking a lot of money here. Um and there's obviously externalities that are driving a lot of this decision. Um and I love the idea of regionalization and I I think it would be great to go in that direction and. Being a larger town in the area, we would obviously be better positioned. I I just have a question. Looking at the annual report, we had one building fire in twenty twenty three. According to the annual report, we had three chimney fires, three brush fires and three motor vehicle fires. Are we driven to buy these trucks to to buy something like? And there's, you know, there's a lot of other calls where you do a lot of other stuff that may not need a pumper truck or a ladder truck. Are we driven by these externalities that we have to have this equipment, even though it might be more efficient to buy another like? Off-road vehicle to fight brush fires or things of that nature? Or are we just locked into buying this equipment? Or this kind of equipment? Or or is there an opportunity to? To adjust our equipment to deal more with the problems that that we actually are dealing with on a daily basis? I mean, I'm sure a lot of you, what you do is medical or otherwise.
Happy day.
So the way we deal with our equipment are a couple of ways. We have standards, i.e. what protects us firefighters. We have the assurance company and then we have what the town actually requires. So that's what the town actually requires. You're right, last few years, structured fires have been really low. Uh fire prevention has been great. We hope to continue that way, but we have um what we call a high risk, low frequency. And then low frequency, uh other way around, uh high frequency, low frequency. Okay, we have to prepare for the low frequency, high risk, i.e. structured fires. Um, you know, a car in the river, we have to prepare for that. That's what you pay us to do. Because we're gonna look pretty foolish if your building's on fire and we just stand around because we have nothing but amulets. Uh and the insurance company pretty much feels the same way. So we're driven by those those um low frequency, high risk calls. And insurance company is the biggest driver of that. Um so are our citizens' health and and life safety. So while we may not, and we're lucky right now, don't have any structure fires, I'll use that one as our big one. Um we do have that and I mean, whether it's in this town or Hartford or Lebanon. We go and our equipment helps them and they bring their their equipment to us and we share resources. But we still have to protect our own town first by what is required. First and foremost, the life safety, then insurance and then what actually. So I hope that kind of ans- answers it. It's a little muddled, but.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
It's my obvious part of me is very aggressive about region.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're, all the towns buying equipment based on the same response to, and and you know, you're quite right, you have to be able to respond to. A low frequency, high risk thing.
Yeah.
Like when.
Yep.
I mean, you know, the fire truck, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh which was a great, which was a great example of how region. Cause yeah, somebody brought one. I guess.
We had several, yes. None of our own, no.
So I understand what you're saying. It's just, it's a huge amount of money.
No, I know.
As kind of insurance costs.
Yes.
Uh so.
But your your how, your homeowner insurance requires us to do this, otherwise you solely foot the bill.
Yes, absolutely. I I appreciate that, but not arguing.
Yeah, no, 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 yes.
We should look and regionalize really, really, as as you've done since then.
Yeah, we have and 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 uh right before uh COVID, uh we were ready to pull the trigger on uh taking over two towns, but one town really resisted. And uh we had to drop the whole thing out because the other town was unreachable without having the town in the middle. So who knows what will happen in the future, but I'm always looking for that regionalization.
Well, I would like to see the hot quotes.
Same as.
Hot quotes.
Okay.
So about the used ladder, you mentioned that.
Yep.
Possibility that not worth looking into?
All right, so here's my big one. So something fourteen, fifteen years old, we're gonna pay six, seven hundred thousand dollars for. We're gonna have to get it refurbished, which is another three hundred thousand. Uh we're probably not gonna be able to get loans for that. Um, and we could be be buying some of these, you know what? It it really makes me nervous, but if that the town's willing to do that, I mean, if if it drops an engine or needs a ladder three years down the road. I just don't wanna have scorn cast upon.
Well, you will, I know.
I really don't think it's worth the gamble to pay half the price of a truck on a used truck that's already almost over its service life. That's just me.
I understand from what you're saying is that you can't really get a hard knock make without making a commitment that you're gonna put. So I think we're kind of torn there. I do notice six years today that pipe burned down.
Yeah, oh, is it six?
Yeah. Um. This story. Um. So I don't know, Eric, are you recommending that we get some numbers from you at the ultimate cost or?
I'm saying, I mean, we can estimate the best we can. I mean, I just back the figures, uh Chief Green has requested two, two point nine something million dollars.
I think it'll come in lower than that.
Yeah, uh you take that a twenty year bond, jump about a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year before interest, so we call it one eighty two hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's not with that. I mean, at the same time, we should be banking for the next time this happens so that we're not.
Yeah, and if you put fifty thousand dollars away the next four years, you're gonna have about three hundred thousand dollars.
For your engine.
Right.
Yeah, so you're gonna have the first two years covered. I mean. Or you could put away more the next few years. There's there's ways to do it, but I mean, end of the day, you're looking around, I'd say. Between one fifteen, two hundred thousand dollars of bond per year over the next twenty years for the for two engines.
But also look in the next few years, twenty twenty six, the town garage is paid off, Penangle is paid off, uh twenty thirty, I believe. Uh Irene is paid off. So there are some big ticket items, uh.
We have more to come.
I know. Yeah, but I'm here first. I'm just trying to sell my stock.
So what about engine three? Should that be refurbished?
Uh right now, I don't even wanna think about it. Um.
Better.
Yeah, four years will sneak up on it, but if we order it today, I mean, we'll be sitting pretty good. But I think in three to four years, we should seriously think about pulling the trigger on that one.
Refurbishing or buying new?
Yeah. That one's been banged up pretty good. Um it's a big truck, lot of torque. Frame rails are super long, as you know, and going over some of our twisty roads. I don't think they're as straight as they used to be. But I can take a good look at it, Greg, and you're welcome. I would love to have your expertise given out too.
Well, I say use them all for another twenty years. It's too bad. There's good, they have guidelines, but I think they're pushing it on myself. Cause it's too much, it's too much, it's too much money.
I know, but the risk is if it dies, then we're four years without a truck.
Yeah.
And and that's where we're getting after, you know, a twenty five year old rig. Whereas a dump truck sitting in your yard, you can buy, but with a piece of life safety equipment, it's tough.
If you were to get it refurbished. You did without an engine.
Yeah.
So you gotta rely on the neighboring town now.
But we'd still have a tanker in our shop and an engine down at station two.
And to me, it seems a shame we can't use these at another station.
Use what?
Use these at another station. Why we can't, why we have to get rid of them?
Oh, I mean, if you don't wanna, we we don't have to. So if we wanna save the seventy five hundred bucks trade in, we can put them at station two, but then I get into a manpower issue. Who's gonna staff them? Who's gonna run them? When it does need ten thousand dollars worth of repairs, are you gonna let me do that when we are only offered seventy five hundred bucks of trade in? I know what you're saying, Greg.
How did you?
I'm just wondering, like, if when, when we expect the OSHA requirement to come, if it is going to come, or is it?
July, uh July, January first.
It's coming June.
Yes.
Um the board can vote to approve chief's request, a different request. They could uh want some time to think about it and revisit this in a meeting in August. I don't think a month will make a massive difference, ideally, hopefully in price. Um so if you don't feel like you wanna make a three million dollar decision today. Um, you know, you you can have some some time and have chief back next month to go over some stuff, maybe have Robert here as well to answer questions and.
And I can try to squeeze if we're gonna look at both at the same time, get some tighter numbers. There's still only gonna be estimates.
Right.
I can do some real crying and kicking and screaming.
Yeah.
Try to get.
Kind of spec out what you can't spec out at all unless you.
It's gotta go to the factory and it's, it just takes forever.
I'm wondering if, yeah, I I would personally like more time with this decision, but I'm also wondering if there's another way to approach this conversation. And I don't know that this is even possible, chief, but like if we said like we're comfortable with X amount, would it be possible for then for you go to go back to your specs and see what's doable within that amount? Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 but it's, to be honest, we do not buy fancy rigs.
No, yeah, I know, and I understand. Um, yeah, I I personally would would like to wait for till August. And and figure out what more information I need. I agree.
Okay.
I can try to get some tighter numbers.
That would be great. I think if you tell them that your boards are, you know, your boards. Difficult and doing the best you can.
Yep.
I think you should squeeze Bernie a little bit more.
He he never even showed up. It was his people. I was disappointed. So I wanted to autograph my parents.
Um, as I guess most of the public here tonight. Um, I just wanna make a point that this is the kind of thing where I think you probably need to plan a bit of a communication strategy around this. I mean, I assume we have, I assume there's a public vote on on these bonds. Um, so I I just, I think it should be clear that when you come back and revisit this. That it's it's suitably warned and people know that it's that it's gonna happen just to so that they're clued in. I it doesn't sound like there's really that much choice that we have um based on the externalities, but. But I think just in terms of selling this, you'd be, you'd do well to to make sure that people know this is happening.
Okay, approval of the minutes. Uh just for notes, um five, three, five, seven, two, five, twenty one, I've already been previously approved, so we don't dare approve those.
I have to abstain from five, two, but I would move, we approve five, one, six, ten, six, eighteen, six, twenty, five, six, twenty, eight, six, eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Motion for?
Yeah. I'll motion, I'll make a motion to approve uh the minutes for me, second.
For second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Any other business? Motion to adjourn?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.